March 25, 2024. First of all, we'd like to say the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. May we bow our heads. Our Heavenly Father, we honor you today. We thank you for your presence. Fill us with your path forward, not ours. And please watch out for the people in Israel and this great state of Texas as well as the United States of Americans. In Jesus' name, I pray, amen. Ron, can you take roll call, please?
Milton Wallace.
Here.
Janice Lunsford, here. Angie Saxon, here. Stacy Dixon, here. Lauren Kendrick, here. Cy Ditzer.
Here.
Mayor, we do have a call.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Do we have any agenda changes? We only have one thing on the agenda. Okay. We have the visitors' citizens forum. At this time, any person will be given three minutes to express their concerns or views on any subject to the council. No council discussion or formal action may be taken on these items. Mr. Philip Crouch.
My name's Philip Crouch. I live at 203 North Creek Drive here in Chandler. And I'm here tonight to refute the accusation that Stacy Dixon made at last month's council meeting that I would not let surveyors or anyone else on my property to solve my flooding problem. I did make a statement similar to that, but prefaced it by asking Bob Breedlove, the developer's engineer, to call my attorney and let him handle it. I wanted him to handle it. I didn't want to deal with it. By the time Mr. Breedlove called my attorney, I'd already made that statement. I decided none of the city council members wanted to help me anyway with my problem. At this time, not one member of this council had contacted me. I decided I attended and spoke at the second developers' meeting. J. Michael Compton, the developer, was there in attendance. I told him that I had a flooding problem, but I had built a seawall and a French drain. I had it under control. But they did need to drain that water from the River Oaks project away from my house. The former mayor made a glimmer mark. He said it would probably make my problem better. And believe it or not, that actually made me feel better, but it didn't make my problem any better. It made it much worse. So several months passed by. I was working in my backyard. I noticed the project manager of the development and J. Michael's son walking by my house. So I asked them. I said, "Where are y'all going to route this water from the River Oaks project?" They got the blueprints. They then told me, "Well, the water's going to drain between your house and your neighbors." I mean, it says, "You've got to be kidding me." That's the lowest area in the whole area outside. And they assured me it was going to drain right there. I attended the next council meeting, and I pleaded with y'all. I needed some help. I heard nothing from you. Finally, Mr. Compton arranged a meeting. We met. He made some snide remarks. Said he would build me a seawall along the east side of my backyard, but I'd have to pay to have a fence built. He suggested putting the fence on top of the seawall. He even offered to buy my house. Said the first thing he'd do is tear down my second garage. I thought about what he'd said about buying my house. I said, "Well, let me get an appraiser. Let me have it appraised." He never spoke directly to me again. A couple of days later, after that meeting, Mr. Breedlove shows up at my neighbor's house. They weren't home, so he shows me a plan he designed to build a concrete creep above ground plume. It was going to be 60 feet long and 8 inches high. I forget how wide it was. I think 6 feet. This was supposed to catch that water runoff. Now, really, who of y'all would want that in your backyard? This is when my neighbors and my wife and I decided to hire an attorney. This is about the time Mr. Breedlove called me and I asked him to talk with my attorney because my next-door neighbors had asked me not to make any deals. My attorney stated he never received a call from anyone. After these events, we heard nothing from them or the city. As time continued, every time it rained an inch or more, my garage flooded. It rained three inches. My house flooded at one minute.
We're all -- it's at three minutes.
Okay.
Can you wrap it up quickly, please?
Yeah, I'll wrap it up. Just to make it a long story short, Cy Ditzer got involved. We had a meeting with their lawyer. We eventually came to an agreement. Now, why that had to be mentioned at that last meeting, Ms. Dixon? You direct messaged my wife. Your husband direct messaged my wife. And your mother got her on Facebook. So why you brought that up?
Thank you, Mr. Crouch.
I don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
I'm through.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mayor, I would like to correct fact.
No, ma'am. You have order.
Oh, I can correct fact during this part.
You have order on this.
I can correct fact during this part of the meeting. You should study up.
It says right there that you're not.
If you're going to correct fact, I didn't think y'all -- you never talked to me before. I've never talked to any of y'all.
Mr. Crouch.
Mr. Crouch, please. And you cannot. You're out of order. Mr. Crouch, please. Thank you, sir.
Actually, I can, but you should study the laws and rules so that you know how to run the meeting. But I'll let go.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'll let go.
Thank you. Mr. Crouch, thank you, sir. Thank you. The next person is Bob Valier.
Thank you. I'm Bob Valier. I live at 126 Valier Drive. And I'd like to speak on the modifications to the code of conduct that are being considered tonight. First, I'd like to congratulate the council for making the effort to update these things. It's been little less than a year since the code of conduct was adopted. And at the time that it was adopted, I remember that there was quite a bit of discussion about several points on the code of conduct. And so it's a good time to review it now that all of the members of the council are familiar with it and have been working with it for some time. And you're probably in the best position, honestly, to make necessary corrections. I would like to comment on three things that I think need to be addressed in the revisions. The first thing was an issue that was hotly contested when the code of conduct was initially adopted, and that is the provision that requires that a person be a resident of the city in order to participate on boards, except for, I think, the parks and library boards. There's been quite a bit of feedback from business owners in the community about that provision. These people are asked to contribute to various campaigns that the city has underway or community efforts and have generally been very generous. But some of these business owners live just outside the city limits, and they feel that this is a slap in the face to them. And I would urge you to reconsider the residency requirement for boards. The second issue that I'd like for you to consider involves city employees serving on boards. And I want to assure the council that I have no ill will toward the present city employee who serves on the board. Jill Seals is a friend. I've known her for many years. I had a chance to speak with her this weekend about this issue. She understands my position. And that position is simply this, that if you imagine a world where none of the present players are involved, a city employee that sits on a board may be asked to vote on and approve a project which is supported by the city administration, but one which that person might disagree with. And that person could be put in a position where they feel real or imagined pressure to support the city's position. And that presents an inherent potential for a conflict of interest for that board member. In addition, if that person were to vote against a proposition that the city brought forth, and later there was some kind of personnel issue, maybe passed over for a promotion or not even a raise, that person might make an accusation against the city that this was retribution. The final issue deals with the removal of the chair, which is described in the present code of conduct index as being listed on page 15. I printed out the code of conduct from the city's website. There is no page 15 listed. I confirmed with the city secretary that there is no page 15 on the present code of conduct. This has been a contention between the mayor and the city council previously, and this document is not public. And I think that this is a provision that if it is illegal, as the mayor has contended, needs to get a legal opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'd like to go into regular session. These subjects to be discussed upon which any formal action to be taken are as follows. One, consider an act on some recommended changes to the council rules of conduct as adopted by ordinance 0-2023-1010-B. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to read some of the response tonight before we start our meeting. This is a personal statement. I'm speaking tonight to answer a posting by the mayor and those who responded on WhatsApp Chandler due to the mayor's remarks on March 27, 2024. But first, I want to say that in May 2022, the citizens of Chandler voted for Stacy Dixon and I to be reelected to another office term. When they elected us, they expected us to work for 24 months and not just 22. The mayor has already called us lame ducks, and that term has been picked up on WhatsApp and used on us again. In the May 22 election, there were six candidates and a total of 1,077 people who voted for council members. Of those 1,077 votes, Stacy and I garnered 443 of those votes, a little over 41%. With six candidates, this was a very strong vote for the two of us. This, I believe, shows that our citizens trust us to do what is best for the city. Thus, Stacy and I will be working until the May election. The two of us have chosen not to run for reelection for different reasons. My reason is that I want to see some younger citizens get involved, and I'm ready to retire. My decision was made way before our mayor was elected in May. Just in case some of you citizens do not read WhatsApp Chandler on Facebook, I'm going to read the mayor's posting on the 22nd. A special meeting, and this is his wording, "A special meeting of the Chandler City Council has been scheduled for March 25, 2024. This meeting was requested," excuse it, "by outgoing members Lunsford and Dixon in order to introduce for the fourth time their latest iteration of rules and conduct that appeared immediately after my election as mayor by a significant majority of Chandler citizens. Rather than allow a newly seated body to take this matter up after the election in early May, if at all, these members have shown their determination to legislate more restrictions on their way out the door. Reasonable rules are necessary in many aspects of our lives in order to allow our citizens to live in a community where we share space, services, and time, and to ensure resources taken from us are distributed fairly and to the equal benefit of all. Rules that are designed to protect freedom of speech and the dissemination of information to those paying the bill are also vital to the intended function of government. I do not have any problem with the majority of the rules being introduced because they merely restate what we already do, and we're just taking additional time to say the same thing over and over again rather than focus on what really affects the lives and pocketbooks of the folks in Chandler. I do strongly resist the attempt of a few to impose new rules to take away my guilty as mayor to communicate my concerns about any particular matter affecting the operation of the city. I was elected on promise to do exactly that and will continue to do so. In calling attention to wasted poor planning, I have embarrassed and inflamed the council majority and city administrator with this result to muzzle the mayor. If these rules pass as presented, the mayor will be excluded from comment or discussion on agenda items and present only to conduct the present, excuse me, present only to conduct the meeting without input something like a trained monkey could do if he or she could speak. Decorum and parliamentary process have a proper place, but here they are being used as a guise to move the mayor out of this discussion. Please see it for what is this. My comment at this point is that the rules do not exclude the mayor. They only state that he must remain impartial and have the least to say, which is common practice and is a part of Robert's Rules of Order. Also, he has not maintained them in our meetings. Back to his thing now. My election displeased these members, and every effort is being made to further diminish the mayor's ability to function as a member of a governing body. Prior to my arrival, there were no official rules of conduct, none, zero. And this is my comment here. At this point, the mayor has posted a negative statement about council members, which is unethical. The reason why he did not have a code when he came on board is explained later. Continuing with his remarks. It is likely that more rules will be placed in place at March 25 meeting, and many have already taken effect. Please let your council members hear from you on this matter and attend the meeting. My rebuttal to his statement. June 13, 2023 was his first night here as mayor. In Cy's first meeting as mayor on aisle 8, if you will go back and view it, then will find that I stated that the code of conduct was being researched before John Whistleton became our city administrator and that we should get the code of conduct done because we had a novice mayor and a novice councilman, and having this in place would make it easier for them rather than searching the TML notebook that I held up. I did not name the TML notebook, but I held it up. As I was speaking, I was rudely interrupted by the mayor multiple times. This is very disrespectful. Yet he has accused us and some of our employees of being disrespectful to him. 2023, Agenda Item 10 about the code of conflict was placed on the agenda by the mayor, and he removed it at that meeting because he didn't think any change would be made, and he stated that. Councilman Wallace and Kendrick had both indicated to me that they would like to tweak some of the things, but the mayor made it impossible for us to do it that night. December 12, 2023. It had been expressed that we should all be here for dealing with the code of conduct. And we had knowledge that one council member could not be there, and December is very busy for all of us, and a lengthy meeting was a hindrance for others involved in Christmas activities, so it was not put on the agenda. March 12, 2024, Stacy Dixon and I requested the code of conduct be placed on the agenda so that we could have a called meeting with only one agenda item. That way, a lengthy agenda or the mayor could not prevent us from getting this taken care of. That way, the incoming council members would know what is expected of them and would not have to be dealing with this. Citizens who live within our city limits, there are people who do not have the privilege to vote in our city elections, posting information about our city finances and what our council employees are doing. Please vet those posts. Find out where those people are coming from. If you can, please come to our council meetings or view them on the city website. The city website is chandlertext.com, and when you click on it, there is an icon in the upper-left corner that has some heads on it and is labeled "Public Meetings" and says "Watch Meetings and View Agendas and Minutes." Click on that, and you will find our council meetings by date. Thank you.
Okay. Now, let's get back to our agenda items. Once again, I'm going to read it again. Consider an act on some recommended changes to the council rules of conduct as adopted by ordinance 0-2023-1010-B. Do I have a motion?
Motion for discussion?
Motion for discussion.
I will motion and.
You don't need a motion for discussion.
Well, Robert's Rules of Order says you do need a motion for discussion. You have a motion, you have a second, and then you have discussion.
That is the way Robert's Rules of Order reads. But we have never used that as a practice, to have a motion for discussion.
I'm trying to adhere to their rules and trying to follow some decorum for them as I'm trying to be helpful and harmful today, as I was the last time. But anyway, we have a motion for discussion. We have a second motion for discussion.
Did I complete making motion?
I thought you did. If I did not, I apologize. We have a motion.
I don't think a motion for discussion is an appropriate motion based upon the way the agenda is working.
So do we want to follow Robert's Rules of Order in this? So do you want to have discussion? I'll start with my left with Ms. Lunsford, and then I will go to Stacy, and then we'll go down to Mr. Wallace, to Lauren, to Angie, and then I'll have my discussion. If we need a second round, we'll go a second round. Ms. Lunsford, you have the floor.
I would suggest that we start back with page one of this call. And let's just be open and flip pages and go through that. And then some of us have some, I think, maybe some new things we want to add, and then come back. We'll get to that point on whatever page that on that point where we have something that we might want to add to it, talk about it at that time. That will keep us moving back and forth, back and forth, to keep us in order. So I think, by the way, our table of contents, our city secretary is well aware that our table of contents will be brought up to date. There are some things that are missing on there or on there that shouldn't be on there.
I have one question before we start.
Yes, sir.
As stated by Mr. Valier, 13.2 has been removed from this. Is that correct?
We did remove that back.
Yes, ma'am.
I wrote that date down Sunday, Saturday afternoon.
And 14.
And number 14.
Yeah. That was removed at the October 10.
I thought they had, but I wasn't sure. I got a copy of this, and it had those done. Then I got another one that didn't have any. I wanted to clarify that.
It was 13.2 and 14. So the entire page 15 was removed at the October 10.
Yep.
So I guess the best thing to do is go to page one. See, anybody has any comments on page one? Two?
Are we talking about like the page we're introducing the ordinance? Are you talking about skipping past?
Where the actual codes are.
Skipping past the.
Yeah, because that contents will end up having to be rearranged.
Okay. Ms. Lunsford, you just have it on page two.
Page one. You may have any questions on page one. Trying to go through it. Two? Three? Now, do you want to talk about if we come along with these suggestions for changes at this point, or you want to come out and get them later? I think it might be better to get them as we're coming to.
Yeah, sure. I agree with that. I agree with that. We do it.
Here. And I'm sorry, some of this is one part of you guys are going to have to read my printing, which is horrible. But so that tonight, when I bring up things, you've got it to look at. I'm looking on page three, under executive session, 3.5. I am suggesting that we add to what is already there that the certified agenda shall be the official/legal record of all executive sessions. At the end of each session, the presiding officer will write his notes, if he feels the need, on the executive session form. After reading the presiding officer's notes, all in attendance will initial by their attendance check to indicate their agreement. Then the city secretary will be called in to officially seal the minutes and will put them in their secure place. Regular session will then resume.
The only thing that I'd like to add to that, I think we should record it as well as have the agenda as well.
Mr. Mayor, I think we've already voted not to record it.
So you're going to add this under 3.5?
Right, 3.5.
And as the presiding officer.
Where it says presiding officer instead of mayor.
Yes, I'm here, Ms. Jones.
Okay on that one? On page four, I would like to.
Was there anything else I could read?
Let me see.
Page.
Do you want to say anything on page three before we move on?
Yeah. Nobody else?
Page three?
Page three?
No, that was my big thing on that.
Did you have anything on three? No. I didn't.
All right. Page four, 51A Agenda. I'm suggesting that we add all agenda items must have the necessary information for council to read, research, and prepare to vote included in their council packets. Only an emergency deemed by the administrator will council be given material upon arrival at the council meeting.
I want to go back to 4.9 to 4.10.
Okay.
I've got an email from Tag Cleaves of the TML, Texas Municipal League, and I'll read it up. And 4.9 and 4.10 both state clearly that basically, let me read it. So we will be, "It's presiding officer is a member of society. He has an individual. He has, as an individual, the same rights as any other member, but impartiality required of the chair and assembly precludes his exercising these rights while he is presiding, normally especially in a large body. He would have nothing to say on the merits of the pending question to participate. He must relinquish the chair." That's Robert's Rules of Order, 43.29. It actually, that a large body is 12 members or more. In a body less than 12, the chair is should be part of the discussion. Now, also, 4.10, "While commanding a presence and knowledge are essential in procedural matters, the president." matters, the President of an ordinary deliberative assidly, especially in a large one, 12 or more, should of all members have the least to say on the substance of the pending actions." I think both of these should be stricken, and let me read this to you from Tad Cleaves. He's the lead attorney for Texas Municipal League. Regarding the council authority to limit the mayor's participation in debate, such actions arise significant legal and practical concerns. The city council can define the mayor's duties and powers. However, restricting speech during meetings poses a risk of violating free speech rights. The Local Government Code, particularly Section 22.042, outlines the mayor's responsibilities, including offering recommendations to improve municipality. This duty implies a necessity for open discussion in public meetings as mandated by the Texas Open Meetings Act. Furthermore, the mayor's role as a chief executive officer entails leadership and strategic guidance necessitating active participating in meetings. Any attempt to limit this engagement could infringe upon the mayor's statutory duties of potential for the First Amendment and equal protection violation, underlines the importance of legal review by the city attorney before pursuing any restrictive measures."
I will say that our attorney checked this, and he said what we have put in here is not legal, and what TML always tells us when we ask them questions, they refer us back to our local attorney.
Absolutely. And I don't think you can statutorily do that. I think it's not only unethical, but it's legally wrong. I'd like to strike those two items from this, 4.9 and 4.10.
I guess can we comment a little on the ones that you brought up?
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. That's what I wrote for.
And then, after we do that, I did have a couple others on that page as well that I wanted to talk about a little bit, but on 4.9, this is where I feel, or what I feel, I should say. And I know some will disagree with me, but I feel like I need to say what I believe. And that is that I don't have a problem really with the mayor giving comments, just like I don't have a problem with John Woodsole giving comments, but in the end, neither John Woodsole nor the mayor nor any of the other city staff have the power of the vote, and in the end, I feel that it's very, very important that the mayor respects the vote of the council and does not try to influence or pressure or push the council a certain way because of his beliefs. So, to me, on that one, it's really about us working together, and it's about there being a balance. There's a fine line, Mr. Mayor, I feel, where at some points, you don't, I don't think you like to accept the things that we decide on, and I think that is where this becomes an issue. And I wish more than anything, we could be at a place where you could say a little piece, but then, at the same time, once you said your piece, you could respect what the council does.
I think I should always, and I agree with this, I agree with these rules for the majority of them. These ones right here, I don't agree with, and Tad Cleaves, based on this response, absolutely does not agree with them either. I read them to him, and he said that they absolutely were out of order. They were beyond that order. But we can agree to disagree, I guess.
No, actually, I'm somewhat agreeing with you on this one. Somewhat, not completely. I mean, you can read my paper and see the notes that I made on this out there.
I heard what you said.
I am personally okay with you being able to speak on an issue, but as far as not respecting the decision of the council, I think that's where I run into an issue with it.
Duly noted. Thank you.
I'd like to say something too. On 4.9 in particular, I really feel like everyone on the council needs to have input of some sort. I also agree with Lauren though, that, you know, whatever the decision is, whether I agree with it or not, that is the decision, and we have to go with that, but I do feel like that there needs to be an order maybe in which we do it so that it's the standard that we use and we go by. And but in the end, when it's all said and done, whether I agree or not agree, I don't need to get up in the storm out or, you know, go outside of here and make a big "booh-a-ha" about it. We need to be working for the betterment of the city, and we just have to work with it, whatever that is.
So, you think that should be stricken, 4.9, 4.10?
I think it needs to be in a way that you need to be able to have an input into what's going on, state what your feeling is, and then at that point, you know, we take the vote and go with it.
Later on, somewhere on down here further, it does say that the mayor is supposed to be impartial.
Right.
This is not cutting out the mayor from saying, from not letting him say anything. It's to keep a mayor from continuing to push his or her, I'm just going to use "he" and "his," I'm not...
Yeah.
To push their points, to try to get the council to follow to their points. Mayors should be able to present stuff and give us the pro and con. It's not shutting them down specifically from being able to speak.
Then, Janice, is there a way that maybe we could tweak the wording to where everyone... So, I'm sorry, Angie, I apologize.
That's okay. I have...
You're more sheltered. Please, you have that one. You have spoken. I apologize.
The impartiality is important.
Well, I was looking at stuff, and this, um, Jurassic Parliament recommends that the mayor have a right to participate in discussion as long as the mayor does not dominate. The mayor has details and general situation that's relevant and important for the council members to know, and it said this may be stated in council rules or procedures, or it may be simply a matter of custom. Unless the law says otherwise, the council is in charge of its own procedures. If your city allows the mayor to speak to issues, Jurassic Parliament recommends that in each round of discussion, that the mayor speaks last.
Oh, is there... I'm sorry, I'm still spoken.
Pass it down. I heard she can read it.
Stacy hasn't gone to speak.
It starts right here, just what you just...
And she...
No, it's a different one, just a different page. I didn't... She can read it. It's right there.
And what, is there any way that we can do it to where we state the agenda item, we all discuss, everyone makes their comments, and then the mayor speaks last?
Yes, ma'am. I agree with that totally, completely.
As long as he's speaking impartially.
How can he speak impartially? If you read, and I think you have to, you actually fair about it too, if you read this, Ms. Lunsford. I'm sorry, I'm not speaking into the speaker. I think it's hard to be totally impartial. I think that's humanly almost impossible, but I agree that there has to be respect. There has to be...
Si, you have been...
A turn, I guess.
You have been, you have been showed your partiality in many ways, and come back at us, and come back at us, and come back at us, and have spoken at length many times, basically saying the same thing. So, we need to be protected in that. That impartiality is very important because you are the mayor, and if you're pushing for your point of view, maybe we're feeling sorry for you, you know, and that happens. That's human, instead of keeping our minds on what is really best for the city. And that's the reason we need that impartiality. I liked how Angie was wording that down there.
I've got it right. Go ahead. Lauren, get that.
I think, I think as a matter of practice, it would be hard to say the mayor would have to speak last, because what if you got into a situation where y'all are all debating back and forth, and if somebody calls for the question, and then there's immediately a motion and a second and a vote?
Well, the thing I read was each person on the council would be allowed to give their statements, and then the mayor would get to give his statement before anyone called for a vote or spoke for a second time.
Well, I'm just saying, in the matter of a heated discussion, and somebody calls for the question, there's an immediate vote...
If you do that, though, the mayor has to rule on it, and Robert's Rules of Order clearly states that the call, the question, is meant when there has been too much discussion, it's went around more than twice, and it's gotten out of hand, so you want to go ahead and bring a vote, it's going nowhere. And that's how Robert's Rules of Order works. And I think that, you know, I have been a mess in learning those rules, and I study them quite vehemently the last couple of weeks, because I agree with you, there has to be some semblance of order. And I've learned, and I'm still learning. I've got more to learn before I get proficient at it, but what she's stating is what I've read too, what Angie stated, that each one of them, it starts with the council, and each one of them speaks first, and when they're done, then you can, that's right here, then you can, then the mayor speaks last, and then you, if you need a second round, you have that, you know, but no one speaks before each person gets their chance to speak. We don't interrupt them, and I've been bad about that. I have been. I've been one of the very worst about that, and I apologize to all of y'all for that. I'm going to do better. That's all I can say.
I'm not seeing the exact wording she was talking about.
It's right here.
It just says strongly recommends the council have, give the mayor, but I'm not seeing how she had it worded down there.
She read pervading from that, pretty much, where it says right there. Can you give me the hand or your phone? Yes, ma'am.
Because this is not saying anything.
Here you go. Here you go. It's right here.
I don't know. I think the agenda item would be smoother if we would just give the topic of the agenda item, you know, state the agenda item, everyone go and make their comments, then the mayor make his comments, and then if there's any more discussion, if someone, to go a second round and then vote.
I agree.
So, how do we word, how do you word that there? If you strike that, you don't need to replace it?
Don't give an opinion before...
Can I say something about this? I tend to differ in opinion in that if you look at 5.2, I think this would handle the entire situation if we directed this towards the mayor, not just the city administrator. It should be directed towards both of them, that the mayor to the city administrator and council should provide the data for the packet when the packet is released, and that they should present the agenda item at the beginning, and then we debate. I, to me, that makes more sense, because we might get to the point that we wish to call the question and end debate, and if he hasn't said his piece yet, but I do think it should be limited, because again, this discussion alone has been dominated by the presiding officer. I do think it is important to put the term in there that cannot dominate the discussion.
That's fair.
What are you telling me to put next?
So, 5.2, if you look at it, when the agenda item is presented, normally, it would be John presenting the topic. If the mayor has anything to add at that point, I think that should be aired out at that point, then allow us to debate and vote. My personal opinion, it just makes more sense to me that way. And if it's an agenda item that he has placed on the agenda, or the presiding officer has placed on the agenda, that should be presented to us going through the data, just like John would present it to us.
Or any requests in council member.
Yes, of course. Absolutely. Yes.
I'm going to interject something here, and these are y'all's rules on how this is conducted. This isn't, doesn't have anything to do with me. But in the long time that I served as mayor, I never, I never called on anybody to speak. Let me clarify that. I called on somebody to speak when they wanted to speak. I didn't call them somebody to speak if they didn't want to speak. So, yeah, something had been debated thoroughly between two people, and everybody was ready to make a decision, I didn't call them three other people to speak just to speak. I'm not saying that's the right way to do it, but I'm saying if you set those rules so stringent that you're going to follow rules that everybody has to speak before, you know, a vote can be taken, I think you're cutting off your nose to spite your own face, because what if you have an agenda item that's a resolution to declare the sky's blue? That doesn't take a whole lot of discussion. It's certainly something that probably you don't need to go down the road for everybody to say, "Yeah, I agree, the sky's blue," and then everybody votes the sky's blue. So, I think there's got to be some give and take. You need to have the forum, you need to write your rules on how you're going to discuss and how you're going to vote, but I don't think you have to be so strict as to where we're going to go through, and everybody's going to talk, and we're going to do it in a specific order, and after the second time, you know, we can call for, just my personal opinion.
Well, there's sometimes, I wouldn't have enough knowledge to speak on some of these technical things that we, that come about, and I would not like, I'd have to sit right there and say, "I don't know enough about this to speak to it," because there's things I don't understand.
Right. I just don't think you need to, absolutely, you need to have order and forum. I don't think you need to bog yourself down with such specifics that you're being detrimental to yourself.
And I'm not suggesting that he has to speak on every topic, but I think it would be more beneficial for that opinion, as he's made it clear he's going to be political and he cannot remain neutral, to give that opinion before the debate takes place. And it could be an optional thing. He doesn't have to do that, but I think it needs a place. And we do not want new council members elected, and then it to be blasted all over Facebook that they didn't give him his time to say his piece.
I think probably my biggest concern out of the whole thing is I just, somehow, however we need to word it, I just think that everyone, not that they have to speak, but I think it's important that everyone is given the opportunity to speak before we do something like calling a question or something like that. I think that that is important to at least allow that opportunity.
But Lauren, also, when the question is usually called, it's after things have just gone round and round and round, or maybe the presiding officer has called on folks from the audience who should not have been called on. The meeting is typically out of order when that happens. I'd just like to make that point, because that can be verified in the videos.
Also, in the videos, it's also been, you guys have called the question right away before discussion. That's happened as well. So, I think everybody carries a little bit of fault. None of us are without blame, none of us, including myself. None of us are without blame.
Well, my opinion on this is that everybody, you don't necessarily have to go down the road, say Milton, then Lauren, then what, but I think that maybe, you know, if there's an opportunity to speak, maybe the question is, comment is made, any other discussion or whatever from the council members, and then at that point, then say what he has to say, and then we go to vote. But it didn't necessarily put everybody on the spot, "Well, I got to say something next round," but, you know, called, asked, "Is there anyone like to have comment?" But we have to understand then that we're not going to be going back and forth, back and forth. We need to move it down the line and let everybody have their say, and then, if you want to rebut, then you do it at that point.
I think that's kind of where I was at too, like instead of it, I just, I remember there have been a few times where there's been a council member that was not allowed, didn't get the chance to speak, and yes, things had gotten out of hand in the situation, so I understood what... And, and yes, things had, had gotten out of hand in the situation, so I understood what, what happened and what transpired. But I'm just trying to see what can we do to keep that from happening, where we don't have as much back and forth before everyone at least gets one chance. So we don't get to the point we have to feel, we have to call for question before everyone gets a chance to speak. I guess that's what I'm trying to say, I would like.
Angie?
Well, I mean, can we put it in there some way?
Could y'all reword four nine, Laura?
All right, you know, put in there, that no council member speaks for a second town, time until all council members have a chance to speak. Don't say they have to speak, but say they have a chance to speak. That way you won't get it going back and forth between one or two or three different council members and then two others never have the chance to say anything.
Is there not?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Is there not a section? About?
I know I made a note, and I, I had to go back and look at it again, John, but I made a note on four nine at the bottom. That I felt there was a little bit of conflict between it and seven point three, and I know that we're trying to stay on one page, but there, that section did start talking a little bit.
So eight point one two, eight point one two deals with calling the question. So we can deal with that as we get to eight point one two. So really, really, you just need to handle four point nine and four point ten.
Well, if you delete them, it counts it anyway, seven point three looks like.
Well, I don't, I don't think they wanna completely delete them, but I think they're willing to.
No, I don't think they want to delete, I think they want to reword it. That's the reason I asked, could those two down there reword it?
Y'all wanna work, reword it?
Do you wanna work on four point nine?
Let's, let's work on and get it done. Let's leave here tonight and get it done.
Okay.
And then we can top it up in a final four on then.
We'll have to start this.
Okay, that'd be that four point nine and four point ten, combine those two together.
I think that'd be a good idea, I agree with you.
I mean, you could, or you could keep them separate still, but you could.
I apologize for not being on the team.
You two right.
Okay, we're going to work on that, we're gonna go to five point nine.
I, I, I know what you're saying.
Can you start with that, and then I'll take over from there on that one? Okay, so Angie's starting on that one, so she has it on her phone, the?
Which one's she working on?
She's working on four nine.
Okay.
Um, while she's?
Can, can, can y'all read this real quick? If you delete four nine and four ten, okay? And just leave? I'm trying, I'm sorry.
The light's glaring on it.
Can we blow it up just a little bit?
I'm trying, I'm trying.
Here we go.
Presiding officer has the same individual rights as any other member. However, the presiding officer shall not dominate any discussion.
Yeah, I think that's fair. And?
Is that all we need to say?
I mean, to, to make that short and sweet, and to the point, um.
I think you should put in there also that. No, well, well, any, each individual will be allowed to speak and no one will interrupt them. Until each, he'll go, oh, I don't know what it is.
Well, I, I think that's already in the decorum.
For seven point three?
So, section four deals with the presiding officer and duties. It, it's not, it's not calling for questions, it's not.
I think you're good, I think you're good, I agree with that, I agree with that.
That's what it says here on my phone.
Yeah.
In my little phone.
Hey, John?
I agree with that, I think it's, it's good, good.
Can I ask about one, one word potentially in there?
Yes, about all of them.
If it said, what if it said the presiding officer has the same individual discussionary rights? Just so that we're, we're specific, we're talking about the discussion time? And not, obviously law doesn't give them the right to vote or to do, since?
Well.
Or is that already clarified from something else?
Well, the?
Individual means each one of us.
Okay.
The, the local government code dictates that the mayor and a top A general officer doesn't have the ability to vote.
Sure, something we don't, we don't need to add in there again, too.
Doesn't have the ability to make a motion. So, nothing we do in a rules of conduct can include that.
Sure, okay, thank you.
We'll change that.
Backspace.
I'm good with that.
I am too, I'm good with that.
How do you feel?
I'm trying to see it.
Here, 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 on my phone.
Yeah, I can go back.
As long as they don't dominate.
There you go.
That, that individual's right, as long as they do not dominate.
That, that works, I'm good.
I'm, I'm just a little conflicted, just in the sense, I, I feel like the presiding officer should be able to say their piece. Past experiences as a council member prior to last year's election, the mayor from time to time did state an opinion? Or kind of set the stage for discussion. However, I'm just concerned that the way this is worded, that the presiding officer will dominate discussion. And anytime something is said that is disliked or against the personal agenda? That it will be derailed with comment from the presiding officer. So that is my concern, council. The presiding officer is more of a public figure. The presiding officer does not have a vote, the presiding officer should not dominate discussion.
How, how would you word it?
I would like to keep four ten in there. Maybe just a little tweak on it, but, um.
Well, I, 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 again, and John, with your, all of your experience, you may completely disagree. But I feel like it would be more beneficial for the presiding officer to set up discussion, any opinion that needs to be stated, introduce it with the onset of the topic. And then allow the council to debate it out and vote, because that is our job.
The reason I would like to keep four ten in there is because many, many times, our discussion has been dominated by our present mayor. And I, I think we need to keep that in there where he should have the least to say about substance opinion, uh, questions.
Janice, let me ask you this one.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just, again, I'm just, I'm just throwing things around and we're gonna try to find something we all agree with. But I'm wondering what about if we were to take an element from within that and insert it into four ten? Where it says have the least to say, but instead insert something like talking about, um, not allowing them to dominate the discussion within four ten. That way we get the essence of four ten as well, like you're wanting to keep. And, and kind of show a little bit of what Stacy's saying, that it's important for them to have their presence and, um, knowledge in the procedural matters. But then it leaves us more open to do more of the discussion.
I think that's why I feel like he should just speak first and then allow debate and vote.
Where the thing is, I've already stated, I have made some mistakes and I have dominated the, the discussion many times. Not always, but many times I have. And like I said, there's plenty of fault to go around, all around this room. I told you, and, and only time will tell, I am going to try to abide by these rules. And do it, do it as stated, so to try to, uh, push too hard back, I guess you, I should say. Uh, I don't think that's, that's, uh, helpful in this, this thing. I, I would like to see this thing get done one time, one time only, where we don't have to come back ever again and revise any of this.
Sir, I'm not suggesting you be limited in what you say. I'm suggesting you speak first and then allow the council to debate and vote. Sir, it would also do us all good if you would study these rules of conduct and procedures, rather than studying Roberts Rules. Because this is what we have adopted to run our council meetings with. It is a law that was signed into law by you in October.
Can we take, uh, keep four ten? And then where it says have the least to say on the sentence, take that sentence out and insert?
That's what I was, that's what I was trying to get John to do, I think, and I think he's going and doing that right now. Been kinda watching him, I think that's what he's trying to do for us.
Okay, I?
I just can't type, so y'all bear with me.
I just had a question about, um, four ten, with the same thing I wondered about with four nine. There's, there's part in there about especially in a large, like a large assembly. Do we need to have that, no matter what it is? Cause we're not a large assembly.
I was thinking the same thing. We can just take that, take that out.
Yeah, cause I was like, we're not a large assembly, and so then.
That's the way it was listed in Roberts Rules.
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
I think we can, we can for us.
Then we would change out the four nine officers.
Right, yeah.
And just combine.
Which would then become four nine.
One, one question I had, Stacy, I wanted to ask you about the speaking first or speaking last. What if, I'm just thinking pass even him to somebody else. What if that person gave an oratory before the process started? Is that?
That's what I'm getting at. That's what I'm getting at, because what I would prefer not to see is response coming in the midst of debate. Because the debate is between the council, the vote is for the council. If there's something you'd like to introduce or a piece you'd like to state, I would like to see that done at the beginning. I can't help but think about our national government. The president does not debate with Congress. Congress debates amongst itself and makes the laws. The president has different jobs. Now, I'm not trying to squelch the presiding officer's voice, I'm allowing the voice to be heard. But it is not the presiding officer's duty to debate, as it is not the president's duty to debate with the lawmaking body. And that's where I'm coming from.
I, I, I hear what you're saying, I understand what you're saying. So by them stating their opinion or idea, then at that point, then everybody else, we're actually discussing the topic and voting.
Correct, that's the way I see it happening.
Instead of being a response to what everybody else has said.
Exactly, that's, that's the way I feel about it.
Okay, I see what you're saying. That could move things along.
I think so too.
So do we need to have it in this, uh, which will be four nine? That the presiding officer speaks first with the agenda item?
I think so, that's, that's my biggest opinion here, is that the presiding officer should speak first? And introduce anything they have to say about that topic. And should not dominate the discussion with that introduction, but should basically set the stage, say their piece, and then turn it over to discussion.
But John, is there a way you can insert that into the second statement, like it says, while a community presence and knowledge are essential in procedural matters? The presiding officer of an ordinary delivered assembly should, and then however Stacy wants to word that, should speak first? Should present?
Each agenda item.
Okay, so what?
I think where it talks about, uh, presenting the agenda items? Might be the best place to put it, because he presents an agenda item, then that would be his time to go ahead and speak. Sometimes John would have to speak first, because it might be, uh, an agenda item that John's put on there. And so he needs to give us that background foundational information, talk about what's in the packet. And then the presiding officer say their piece. And then turn it over to discussion and vote.
That's a good, good way to do it, I agree with that.
The only, the only thing I would say to that is that.
How's that?
The agenda item.
I know, I know.
In four ten, in the second line, just to make it kind of flow and make sense. Where it says the presiding officer of an ordinary delivered assembly of all members should refrain, see, have a comma, then put refrain. Should refrain from and not dominate discussion. Maybe. Shall, and then take away that S in front of it. Or?
Okay, I can't type, I can't spell, I mean, y'all are learning real good.
Does, does the, the change to three, three five need to be on there too? Are you creating a new document or?
No, I was just.
We can just put all the pieces together?
Yeah, I was just trying to put something together that y'all could all read at the same time and we can kinda agree on.
I like that.
I want those words too.
Okay, so is that four nine and four ten?
Four ten, okay.
Everybody's good?
Keep it, don't lose that.
Did it hit print?
Or get save as we're going along too, just in case something happens. Set it on auto save or something. Whatever. That looks like another. Can I make a statement about four seven? If we're done with that section? I know that's on Roberts Rules of Order. But I'm just, and this may be ignorance on my part, Ms. Janice, because I'm just, I'm not, this is my, my first term as well, never do anything like this. Is that normally the way the mayor speaks? Uh, maybe I just didn't hear it when Libby was here, I don't, I don't know, I guess I just never tuned in or?
Well, we didn't have some of these things in place when Libby was here either.
Yeah, you need to do it.
Okay.
It keeps, it keeps somebody from their swelled ego hollering, ah, 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 you know, into coming.
But the council should also speak in that way. It's not just the presiding officer, the council should speak in that way and keep things from becoming me against you personally. It should be third person.
So technically, we're supposed to say, how would responses be? I was about to say, how would I respond, but then, so I'm, I'm just trying to understand what we're?
I don't know, I've never seen it done except on the presiding officers.
Yeah, it's the only thing I've ever, never read either.
Okay, just for the presiding?
Yeah. The chair recognizes his counsel.
Okay.
Counselor, Lauren Fletcher.
Okay, that makes sense.
And then you have the floor, and then, and nobody interrupts you while you're speaking. And then when you're done, then goes to the chair now recognizes Angie, councilwoman Angie Saxon. It goes, it goes, it goes like that.
So it's just kinda making it sound more formal in a way, in one's personal?
Gives it more decorum. It, it, it makes, yeah.
What happened?
I think it helps make it flow.
Did you press save, John?
Can we see it on the video?
Oh, you did?
And I'm not anywhere near his computer.
Okay. Did it hit print?
The computer died, John?
We're good, continue.
Oh, you did? Yeah, we're good. Oh, good.
Thank you.
I do. I still have something on page four, but I, I don't know if you want me to say all the ones I have first before it goes to the next person, or how y'all want to do it? Do we want to just turn?
This page, anybody's got a thing on this page?
Oh, okay. So I just had a question then on five dot one, five point one. My question about it is that there was another section in there that I remember Blake talking about saying that we needed to have three council members on. And we changed, we changed that. But he, he explained that in the meeting though, cause he was talking about the agenda. He just said that, and I, I would have to go back and watch it again, but I watched it last night, and I agree with you, to me, it makes it a little bit. It does for me, it makes it a little dicey, but I remember him going in, because you asked him at that point, how do we do that? And he responded something to the effect of, we just mention what the topic is we would like on there? Not discussion, not, you know, going into specifics? And then we say, would you agree with that? And at that point, we move on, it was something to that nature. And I'm just asking because of the attorney's opinion, I just wanted to ask.
So I, I think the level of government code actually says you can require three, somewhere I read that. And, and Blake did tell us. You can ask somebody else to help sponsor an agenda item. As long as you don't debate the merits of the item, and you're not making a decision on what you're gonna vote on before you get here, it, it's a legal conversation. But having three, I, I mean, you're, you're probably opening yourself up. I think staying with two, unless there's an issue with two, that would be my recommendation.
I mean, I, I don't have an issue with.
And I, I was thinking Blake also told us we could go with two.
You can.
And not have to go with three.
And I'm definitely fine with that, I just, the only reason I brought it up is because there was another section where we did make that change. I don't remember what section it was on, Stacy, do you?
That's to call a special call.
Special meeting.
Yes.
There it is, okay. So I just didn't know who wanted to, wanted to do the same thing there, I'm, we don't need to, in my opinion.
Okay, are we ready for page five yet?
Last one, this, this one, well, this one transitions to page five, and it was just a question I had for John. Um, it's on five point one D, where it says the copy of the agenda with or without attachments is determined by the city administrator shall be made available to the public. Don't we normally always provide those PDF attachments on the agenda? Okay, so I was just curious.
The only thing we don't, there are some instances where we might not. Yeah. Any executive session, we do not provide.
Okay.
Yeah, it was, um, an EDC item, where you were offering, um, some kind of incentive, and you had financial information on a company that might be not public record, we wouldn't provide that. There are instances where items that you may have may not be, or should not be available, made available to the public.
Okay, no, I, I understand that. I just wanted to clarify that for the, for the public, if anyone had a question as to what types of situations would not be.
All contracts, um, you know, if there was some kind of security information that we needed to talk about. You know, there, there's different things that may not be public record, and those we wouldn't provide. But everything else we do.
Now, are we ready for page five, Lauren?
I am, I, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just trying to get done with this and be done tonight. That's, I just want it done, so that I have to come back again.
Hmm, I'm great.
Page five.
I'm page five.
We good on page five?
We're on page five.
No, I won't talk about that.
What do you got?
Well, I, I was back to the conversation we had a while, a while ago, when we were talking about the, um, and we might, I'll re-meet it, work this out. But about the presentation, if there was a council member, this talks about the mayor, kind of like the city person and the, and the mayor, but does it also work out the same way for the, us council members as well? Or am I missing?
Are you asking me, cause I referenced that?
Right, yeah.
So what I'm getting at is no two council members should ask for an agenda item to be placed on the agenda without providing all of the necessary documentation.
I got that.
So if I ask, hey, let's look at running a new street, you know, down such and such area, I should have some data for you regarding that. You know, how many people, would we expect to travel that street? Do we expect new development there, yada, yada, yada? That should all be provided to you with the packet, not the night of the meeting.
Right, no, I got that.
No one should put an agenda item on there and not have information in the packet for that agenda item. I believe if we receive a, an agenda item with no information, we should strike that from the agenda at the beginning of the meeting. But repeatedly, we are having agenda items with no information. So I would like to see the, the presiding officer and the two council members who place items on the agenda to meet the same requirements as the city administrator for that agenda item.
Okay, now my question is, it talks about, here it, it talks about the five minute part, that was what I was really referencing.
So I think that's really just for the city administrator, I don't think that's necessary, um, unless we're just introducing an agenda item that we requested, because it might be necessary for us to introduce that. Um, so I mean, that would be up to the council.
I didn't know whether we needed to put that in there or not, that was what I was really getting at.
Yeah.
We need, we need to add that, that it also need council member apply, put their name in here, or just, we just leave it out?
Where are you on?
On five two.
Five two.
We took five minutes, and I think that, to be honest with you, that five.
It says council, doesn't say council members there?
Presentation to the council.
Yeah, I think the five minutes is, is good for whoever put the agenda item on there.
Okay, that, that was when I was clarifying that, that we.
And, and if it turns out it's something a little bit more lengthy, then they could request a, a couple more minutes.
Okay.
It's not, it's not, because this.
I think basically the idea is don't introduce your topic with a twenty minute speech.
That's what I was trying to.
That's a waste of time.
I just didn't want a council member to feel like they could just go on.
Yes, no, I think that, I think basically that whole paragraph should be written for presiding officer and their agenda items, two council members and their agenda items.
Right, I'm, I just wanted to clarify that.
Change that wording, instead of communication, mayor and council, should that be changed for presiding officer? Five point two, the title on it?
I think mayor's fine, I just think we need to add one.
Cause that's.
Basically requiring this same thing of.
That five one A that I suggested.
Council or mayor requesting an agenda item, I think we need a, an additional.
That, that's what I had suggested, that five point one A, that all agenda items must have a necessary information with the council to read, research, and prepare to vote, and included in their council packets on an emergency deemed by the administrator. The council will give a material for arrival at the council meeting.
Okay, so you're saying add that in here?
I'm putting on five, five one A, and you, you've got several little ABCs on five one, and I have that where it says information required.
Oh, okay, yeah.
That's what I, that's where I was looking at.
So basically that already covers what? That, so five one A covers what we were just talking about, potentially adding the five two?
Five one A covers what she says, and we got to have everything in there when that packet comes to.
Sure.
But I still think we need the deadline on there.
Is the deadline up on there?
No, not on here.
It, it's okay, you're asking to add this wording to it.
That's just an addition to five one A. I mean, just five, well, what?
Yeah, there's no later than nine AM, it begins to be changing immediately. I just wonder if we shouldn't change the heading on five two, just to say communication regarding agenda items, and place that responsibility on anyone requesting an agenda item. Does that make sense? That's not just John's job.
Where, where are you?
Five point two.
Change the heading.
Change the heading, communication regarding agenda items. Because that's basically what that paragraph is about, but John is not the only one who addresses agenda items, sometimes it's two council members, sometimes it's the presiding officer.
Well, but if you're providing it under five one A, then it would, then be my responsibility to provide it to everybody else.
Okay, I'm good with that.
So, can I ask a question? Five one B. Whose responsibility is the order of the agenda?
The city administrator.
Because you know what things you're coming up with, put on there, and then you have to take anything from the rest of us and then organize it. Just moving on to page five, see if anybody has anything on that page?
Have you asked anyone?
Probably. You called.
I feel blown up. You need to take that control away from the movement somewhere else.
Oh, you just need.
You need to sit involved.
Maybe, maybe so.
I never come to these meetings without a sweater or jacket, I learned that a long time ago.
Hey, you guys, anything else on page five? Nope. Thank you, John.
Page six?
Oh, we have six two. Yeah, we have six two.
This stuff's just kind of always been around.
Can I ask a question on seven four? Just, just an expla, just an expla, explanation for me personally.
Libby, where?
Seven four. And it's just, it's a simple explanation, I'm sure, but I've seen a lot of times it mentioned in different points that we should avoid personalities. Can, what does that mean?
That means I shouldn't be ugly about you about something.
Okay.
If I didn't like your dress tonight, I'm not supposed to tell you.
On seven three, do you think we should give any type of an example or an explanation of what would constitute abusing the position of the presiding officer? I only say that because that wording could be taken as very, as subjective, in my opinion. Unless we clarify what it is where.
We just outlined that the presiding officer would speak at the beginning, then debate would go to council. So in a situation where the presiding officer continued to chime in and interrupt and insist on their own way, that might be an opportunity where, that might be a situation where the council needed to intervene. And it takes three council members, it says.
Anything else on page six?
Only other thing I had, Janice, I'm sorry. I was, I know it, I know it. The only other question that I had in there, um, and it's not really a question, it's more of a comment. I really want to make sure that anything we're putting through this document in any of the areas is uniform, uh, meaning it matches, if we're gonna say one thing for council, it needs to, unless, I mean, there's certain times where the mayor's responsibilities are different than ours, but as far as, I didn't find anything in there specifically talking about if there was abuse of their position, like let's say that we have a council member, for example, and I'm, I'm not, again, I'm playing devil's advocate, because there is no one in here that I feel should have this happen right now. But if we're making this for the foreseeable future, then it's, in some location, shouldn't there be a clause in there that mentions if a council member does the same type of situation, that they're also held responsible? So that way we're making it uniform?
So you're saying add to seven point four, that's, um.
This, well, seven point three is talking about the presiding officer. But I'm wondering if there should be another clause somewhere in the same general vicinity that includes information, the same type of information about the abuse of power, but it applies to council?
I have an answer for that. Uh, if it's presiding officer, the chair, if somebody's out of order, or they're being abusive towards anyone else, say, say, Miss Lutzford's being mean to Angie, and, uh, you know, beating her up, then I could call her out of order and give her, give her a warning, then the second time, she could be removed from the council, beating until the next agenda item, or from the whole thing, so I think it.
Is that just on state statute, but not in these rules?
It's in Roberts' rules of order.
In Roberts' rules.
Yeah.
But I think, I really think we need to put it in here, only because I have seen some city council member meetings in other places where they had people just act totally way out of, you know, they had to drag them out, kind of thing.
Yeah. So I guess you are right, Lauren, it should be, did you hear what he said? You are right, it should be added in.
It was just something I thought might be worth us discussing for a second, to see if we want to add another.
So I think you could.
Dot.
Layer of affection.
I think you could very easily mimic seven three as a council member and not the presiding officer, to where he takes three to remove.
That's what I.
And you're very correct, you should be able, as the presiding officer, to call out anybody that is not acting appropriately.
Right.
But you don't, you don't want to put yourself in the situation where if you were any future mayor has a vendetta against a council member, and you're removing them for every, or you might know how they're gonna vote on something, and it's not gonna go their way, and they say, oh, Mr. Mayor, and you say, you're out of order, you gotta go for the rest of this agenda item. And then you get the vote you want, because maybe it's gonna be a split decision. So I think for the safety of everybody, you would be better off to mimic seven three and make a seven point three point one.
Or seven point three A.
Can we not just do presiding officer slash council member?
You could.
Well, then you'd have to.
But I think you'd have to rework.
Just take, take that and switch that, put that in, like you said, make it a seven point three A, maybe?
Seven three.
Or three B, I mean, I can count.
I'd go with A.
But wouldn't it be easier if you did a seven four?
We can, we can make it seven four, remove everything else down.
That would be much simpler.
Let's just do seven four and move it down, just change that wording to council.
So you got five one, you got A B.
Yeah, I think we just, easiest thing is just move it down.
So I will rewrite seven three and make a seven four, and just change it as applicable to any council member by the removal of three council members.
Okay, the only thing you gotta look at is on seven, what is seven four now? And then throughout the thing, you're gonna have to change it, cause seven point five is made reference to. You just need to change that throughout the rest of.
Luckily, it only goes to seven point five, though.
You're making it.
I've got a suggestion.
Yeah, but I want to say there's a whole one.
That if the chair calls them out of order, and once you remove them, it takes a vote of, of three council members or more to remove them. or more to remove them.
Well, I think you're, as a presiding officer, you'd always have the right to acknowledge somebody's...
But what I'm saying, if you do it, if you word it like that, then, then it calls for a vote, and it'll take three council members to remove them.
Yeah, and that's true.
That's what I was saying about the mayor.
Good thing for you too, John, is this, seven only goes to seven point five. So you just feel like you're going to correct a whole long way down the line. It's short after that.
And then seven-four comes in on five, and seven-five comes on seven-six.
And then four, then on eight.
So now, I guess we're on page seven.
Page seven.
Twenty-eight, we're on together.
We're halfway through? We're halfway home?
Well, and some of this is, I mean, this stuff on, this, most of the stuff on page seven and page eight and page nine. Down to...
Yeah, wait a minute, on eight point five, was there something I wanted to address on eight-five?
Eight-five?
Procedure or order?
Procedure, point, point of procedure or order? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, ma'am.
Related to that as well. Well, regarding eight-five, though, um, because I have this in my notes too, we should not be having council reports or mayor reports on the agenda that are not treated exactly the same as all other agenda items, where the information to be discussed is provided in the packet and the agenda item is stated clearly and comprehensively so that the public is not misled about what is to be discussed, because that is a violation of the Open Meetings Act. So I don't know if we need to state that somewhere in this document, but I feel it is necessary because I've had to call point of procedure repeatedly due to this item.
Okay, I have a suggestion on that as a new item when we get down to item fifteen to, to address that.
Okay.
Item sixteen?
It's not there. It's, no, it's what I brought with me because now it'll be a new one.
Yeah, I got you.
Be brand new.
I also, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was going to let you finish up.
Well, I just, I was just going to say, the council should not leave these procedures in place if we are not going to study them, learn them, use them, enforce them. It's pointless to have all of this typed out if we're not going to follow the document. And I'm not sure that everyone understands how these procedures are to be used. Um, and so I think it's really important that we all be on the same page here, um, moving forward.
Just going to say that I do agree with you that there probably needs to be something put in place with regards to the, the point of order, because I as well, I reached out to TML with some concerns about specifically making sure that agenda items are specific enough and that there's documentation. And it's not just, it's not a hit at anyone, Mr. Mayor, but you, you are the one that has been providing the reports up to this point. So, but I want it to apply for everyone, not just for you, because what TML has said, and I do have email documentation of it, uh, as well as... But what TML has said is that we set ourselves up, it's basically a liability for the city if we don't follow that and if we're not specific. And this is for everybody, because what I was told by TML is that if a citizen wanted to know what was going to be discussed on an agenda item and they went to the agenda and it was not specific enough to, for them to have adequate understanding of what was coming, they could turn around and sue the city for that. And so I think it's important for all of us moving forward that we work really, really hard to make sure that what we present in the agenda does have supporting materials and it is specific enough to meet the attorney general's department.
I agree with you. I, I completely agree with you.
We have on five one A, information required in the document.
Yep.
It says any item on the agenda must be provided to the city. And we, I'm not reading all, have sufficient information that full disclosure of the item to be addressed is present. It's to the, the council and the public of the topics we consider.
We've already, we've already done it.
Doesn't it cover that?
I think it does. I think it covers it. I think it covers it quite well. So, what page are we on now?
Well, I mean, seven?
Yep.
Eight, nine.
Does anybody have...
And then down to ten are basically, uh, the way meetings, I mean, that tells us how we have to call for all this type of stuff. It comes, it's, uh, that, a lot of that came right from the TML handling also.
Page straight forward.
Ms. Chris, right there.
I only have one question on that, and you go first, Melty.
Well, John was mentioning something about eight point two.
That's what I was going to...
Well, we were talking about calling for a question earlier. And we said we can refer to that later, so...
And someone had mentioned maybe requiring that every council member has an opportunity to speak prior to calling the question.
That was my biggest concern, is just to, to make sure that everyone at least is given the opportunity. Now, they don't have to take it, but just give the opportunity for everyone to at least speak once before there's the option to call the question.
Well, this says that he has to have a vote of two-thirds, state a vote. If you call the question, you have to have a two-thirds vote.
You have to make a motion, call a question, have a second. It would take four of you.
Right. But let's say, what, what if there, and I'm just, again, I'm playing devil's advocate, but let's say that you've got one that's an odd man out in somewhere down the road. This is not right now, because the council as a whole, we're pretty unified, I feel like. But if we're making this, again, for a long-term document, what if you were to end up with a council situation where you had one person that, whose views were different than the other four? It would, to me, that would leave that one person vulnerable and open to potentially a council just shutting them out and saying, "Okay, there's four of us now, we can, we can boot this one person and not even let them say their opinion or state their point."
Roberts' rules of order actually address that. Like I said, you, you, you all get one time to speak or get the opportunity to speak. Whether you take that opportunity to speak or not is up to the individual. And then, if there's a second go-round, after, after two go-rounds, you can't call the question until there's been up to two rounds. That's what it's designed for, is to keep from like a third or a fourth round and just non-stop blabbering.
I just, I was just questioning if we need to put it in this document, because our, we're not following, we're not doing every single point in Roberts' rules of order. And so that was the reason I was asking about potentially putting that in here.
What if you just...
Sure, what if we just added one little sentence and say all, all...
A motion to call the question cannot be made until every council member has had the opportunity to speak.
Yes, I think that'd be great.
Do you want to add, do you want to make it a definitive? Or do you want to make a statement that every opportunity...
That each council person has the opportunity...
Well...
Be allowed the opportunity.
Yeah, is allowed the opportunity to discuss up to two, and I would say up to two times, really.
Well, if...
But I would reiterate, the only times the question has been called has been when the meetings were very out of hand.
Well, there was a couple of times it, it was called before there was any discussion. That's happened. Now, like I said, there's nobody here without blame. Everybody has some blame. Some of us may be a little bit more blamed than others, but, uh, there's no one without blame.
Well, I, I just say that we at least ought to have one time, instead of necessarily having two, because I could go on the tirade on my second time to speak for twenty-five minutes. So, I mean, so, but I'm just saying at least, at least one time.
Yeah, okay.
So could we cover that by just adding a sentence there at the end of what's there?
Yes, that I read it right.
Prior to call a question, uh, each council will, remember what had been given opportunity to speak?
At least one time.
At least once. I, I can't see what he's typing anymore. I guess the screen went out.
He turned it off. He died.
The screen died?
He got too hot in here. He turned the fire off.
I'm going to turn the fire on the party's side since you were cold.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I'm shaking my booty off over here. I won't have any place to sit.
Ron, are you starting to take pictures every time in case?
Well, hopefully, I'm going to be able to save now. So, are, are y'all good with that? Do y'all want to modify that?
Can I see it?
I can see it.
Just take our word.
I'm, I'm going to have to, just, because I'm going to slide it in.
In the event of a motion to close, debate, or call the question, every effort will be made to ensure that each council member has been heard at least once.
That's it, that's good.
We're just going to add that to the end of that sentence.
That's worded.
So now we're down to the middle of page ten now?
Yes.
Get caught up? Okay, Lauren, anything on the rest of page ten?
Don't just look at me, but actually, I don't. I know you're surprised. I don't have anything else.
I think we need to enforce these rules, yeah. We'll have to learn them. And everybody's going to goof and, and mess up on, you know, something, some along. You have to, but it's, it's the continued things that will create... Well, nine point one says morning first.
Yes.
Yeah.
Are we ready for page eleven?
If you don't have page eleven, anyone?
You're asking about page eleven now?
Yes, ma'am.
I do, but I'm glad to let someone else go first.
Oh, I have something on here, too. Going on ten point one, I think we need to amend this, where you say they have to be residents of the city of Chandler. In the EDC board, on the statutes, they can live within ten miles of the city limits if they live in the same county. I think that needs to be reworded to include that, because it, it's, uh, there's many business owners out here in this area that don't live within the city limits, but they have businesses here that pay employees, they have, uh, you know, they, they contribute greatly to our city. And for not, by not allowing them to be a member of the EDC board, anybody within ten miles of, of our city limits, as long as they're in Henderson County, I think that's wrong. And I think that needs to be, uh, we need to, we need to fix that. That's one item. One other item is...
Can we deal with them one at a time?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
On ten dot one that you just addressed?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I also, I still would like to see a modification on that one.
On the EDC?
I res- I respect the decision that is made and, but since we are talking about, or that was made last time, but since we are bringing all of this back up again for discussion, uh, I would like to state briefly my position one more time on this one. And it actually, there are some similarities to what the mayor said. Um, I do feel that our business owners do contribute greatly to our city. And I do feel that a good percentage of our business owners do not live just within the city limits. They live just outside of the city limits. So what I did, I reached out to TML again today and I spoke to a woman named Sarah Tompkins, because I know there was some concern about how we would word it or how we could potentially allow it without allowing any non-residents. So like, let's say that we're trying to allow a business owner that lives one mile outside the city limits. How can we do that and not be considered discriminatory without saying that any non-resident can be included? So I reached out to TML and I said, I spoke to, like I told you, I spoke to Sarah Tompkins. And the first thing that I asked her, I said, I explained to her our situation and what it is we're trying to do. And here is what she gave me. I wrote down what she said. She offered a suggestion of something along these lines, where we give a person two ways that they can meet the qualifications to potentially serve on a board like the EDC board, specifically is what I mentioned. And she said, "A person shall either be a resident in the city limits or own property within the corporate boundaries of the city." That was her, um, her recommendation on that. And I asked her specifically, "Ms. Tompkins, we have concerns. We don't want to be discriminatory. If we're saying, um, that we're going to allow a business owner, but not just a resident that lives within a couple of miles to run." She said, "Well, anything you put on a document, someone could try to take and say it's discriminatory." But she said that she did not believe that the courts could support that. She did not believe that the courts could support that it's discriminatory if we're allowing, just because we're allowing two ways for an individual to qualify for a board." So that was, that's just...
Oh, but, and, and I'm going to say this, and y'all don't take me the wrong way, because I don't have a dog in this spot, I, I don't care how you rule on this, but y'all, you're concerned about business owners on the EDC board. And the EDC board isn't there to necessarily support business. The Chamber of Commerce is a group of business owners that supports business. The EDC board, their role is to promote economic development. And whether that be through supporting current business or that be through the attraction of new business or, um, any function thereof. The EDC board's role is to take the half-cent sales tax money they get and distribute that for the development of business. It's not, it's not necessarily designed to support the businesses that are already there. So I think, you know, everybody's worried about, well, we have business owners that live outside the city. If, did Rick leave? If Rick said, "We have a Chandler Chamber of Commerce, but there's nobody that, if, if you don't live within the city limits of Chandler, you can't be a part of the Chandler Chamber of Commerce." That's not good, because that Chamber, that Chamber of Commerce is there to support the business of the city of Chandler. The EDC is there to distribute the funds that is collected for the residents of the city of Chandler. So there, there's a couple of different functions there, and I think we're, I think we're trying to commingle these. I, I don't care if you allow people from outside the city limits to serve on the board or not. But in, in my opinion, the argument of we have businesses that live outside the city for the EDC board, I, I, I don't think that's as valid of an argument. If you were going to make the argument that it's a Chamber of Commerce, because you're looking to spend the money that's been collected for the citizens of Chandler. And the mayor's right in one regard, but I think he's wrong in another. I don't think they have to live within Henderson County. When EDCs were first formed, you're absolutely correct. But I think they've amended that law to where if they're within that mile radius, even if they live in Smith County, I think they could still serve.
I know that, yeah. Well, I, I still think, one of the other things is, you mentioned property owners. What about a business owner that's leasing the building they have their, their business in?
She gave that option as well on there. She said if we wanted to add that, that that would be, you know, or you could put, "A person shall either be a resident in the city limits or own slash lease property." She gave us the options, several different options and ways. And I, I understand what you're saying, John. Like, I, I'm hearing what you're saying on that as well, that... that in no way do EDC members have to be business owners. My only thought is that business owners that already have established their business within our town, I feel that they have a lot more savvy on what it takes to bring in a business and the necessary components of that than, let's say, I would, for example, as a non-business owner. That was really my thoughts on that. But again...
I agree with that. I agree with you.
I totally disagree. I think it needs to stay with the way it was written to keep these opportunities within our city residents to be on these boards to serve and make these decisions.
I respectfully disagree. I have one other thing too, and I got it from Tad Cleaves. And this has nothing to do with personalities. You know, and a lot of people are gonna think about Lori... I mean, I'm sorry, Jill Seal. Jill Seal's a very wonderful individual. She's smart. She's very intuitive. And I think that any of these amendments we make on these boards should be... Anybody that's on them should be grandfathered in, is my opinion. But I wanna read this from Tad Cleaves about city employees serving on advisory boards. "The composition of advisory boards typically fall under a city jurisdiction rather than state law. It is uncommon for city employees to serve on these boards. This practice aims to enhance citizen participation by ensuring that advisory roles do not disproportionately amplify the voice of those already involved in city decision-making process. Concerning HR and ethics, while state law does not automatically deem coincident employment in board service a conflict of interest, it is crucial for employee boards to adhere to any local ethical guidelines. This includes maintaining confidentiality and avoiding personal gain from board decisions. A city of San Antonio ethics opinion on this question, although specific to its regulations, highlights the complexity of local governance. Considerations in such appointments. The potential for undue influence or disciplinary repercussions to the employee for decisions they take as board members also suggest a cautious approach. If we need to be consulting the city attorney for guidance on appointing city employees to city boards, is it viable?" That being said, I think that there's a lot... You know, you hope things don't happen, but it's so possible that if a city employee is on a board and they make a decision that they feel is appropriate, and a council member, a city administrator, or somebody else within the city feels that was wrong, there could be retaliation. Or the city employee could feel that there's retaliation when in fact there isn't or is. It's irregardless. It puts our city in a place that we could have a potential lawsuit, and I feel we would lose. I'm not an attorney. It's just my opinion. I feel we would lose.
Okay, Si, did you expressly ask him about economic development? Because the economic development laws...
No, I did not.
Okay. If I'd known you were gonna bring that up tonight, I'd have brought the specific law. Says that the Economic Development Board...
It was for any board, ma'am.
Is... The economic... There is a special set of laws for economic development.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
It says that no more than three city employees and council people... And I forgot what the other one. Can be on an economic development board. Therefore, by law, you cannot disqualify an employee of the city from being on the economic development board.
It's just my personal opinion.
Okay, but personal opinion doesn't count when it comes to law.
Let me just say this. My personal opinion is, I feel that all these boards should be filled by citizens of our city to make recommendations to the council. And I don't think that a mayor, a council member, or a city employee should be on any of them. You should join in as a non-voting member and...
That's your opinion, but that is not the law. That's what I'm telling you.
It's my opinion.
Okay. But once again, you're coming back and spending our time giving your opinion when you've already been told that the law does not say that. Si, we need to move on. We don't listen to you again all night long.
The... Well, I stated my point. That's what we're here for, is to talk about these rules. So, that's my opinion.
Just out of curiosity, just from my personal knowledge, I didn't know there was two types of EDC boards. There's a type A and a type B apparently. Do you know which one we are?
B.
We're B?
I didn't know that.
Then, Si, I can read you the direct state law that Janice was trying to quote because I took a screenshot of both types.
Okay.
Just for the record, so we're all on the same page. It says here, "A type E..." Or "A type B EDC board is composed of seven members who are appointed by city council. The city council may appoint a maximum of four city council members, officers, or employees to a type B EDC board." And again, it gives the code 505 dot 052.
Is this for Texas?
This is for Texas. This was given to me by Sarah Tompkins. And it also says, "For cities with a population of 20,000 or more," which that's not... They give some more requirements, but that doesn't apply to us. So that's the part that applies to us. And that's the local government code connection for it.
Did you send me an email of that?
Sure. I can forward it to you as a text write-in.
Screenshot it to Texas to me.
Sure.
That'd be good. Thank you.
So are we making any changes to 10.1?
No, sir. Not as far as I'm concerned. I like the way it's written. I think a big board should be city... Think who live in the city limits.
I will respect and support the majority vote, but I have stated where I feel on it.
Anybody else have any discussion on it?
The only thing I can say is, back to the different boards as far as council members being on the boards. I have just always, you know, worked within the system of saying that, as I always thought that council members should be advisors and not direct... I know you can't, but I'm just saying, to me, that gives more opportunity for more members from the city to be a part of it. Either way, it's fine. But I'm just saying that if we're talking about getting more people involved, it would give us that. But I think as far as, I mean, I'll say it like this. If I'm on one of those boards, library board or whatever, if I'm... Do I need to... What do I need to do if we come into a decision about the library? And maybe I voted one way, and then we got here and do... What do you do? That was one of the things I had a concern about. You know, unless I'm gonna be the one doing the presentation, and then I remove myself from the vote. I don't know. So, that's been one of the things I've thought about. I said, "Well, you know, if I was put in that position, how would I deal with that? Or does it really... Would that make a difference? I don't know."
Well, if the whole library voted yes...
And I voted yes.
And then you came here, and the whole council voted yes.
No, that's fine. But what if it was, y'all voted no?
You could still vote no.
I still could vote yes and be okay. Okay.
Everybody has one vote.
Well, I understand. But I can say that, you know, I was just trying to figure out how you do in those situations. Would you remove yourself, or would you have to? That was my own question with that. Because like, you know, when you were doing the land thing, that was...
I just remembered.
That's what I was reading. I was asking that. Would that be a situation where we would need to remove ourselves from that vote?
I think most of the time, the conflict is only if it's monetary.
Yeah.
I don't think you'll be getting any from the library.
No, I got it. Okay.
Okay. Well, as related to standing committees, we do have one committee that we should have reappointed in March. I apologize. I let it slip. But it will come up on the April agenda, and that is for the TIF board. And there is one member of the TIF board that no longer resides in the city limits. So that's... Y'all will need to be thinking about somebody that you want to appoint to the TIF board.
The TIF board's kind of a horse of a different color, isn't it? So should we have included them in this or just left them out? Because since it's not made up...
Well, the... So the TIF board has five members. There are three members that are appointed to represent the city of Chandler. There's one member that's appointed by the Commissioners Court to represent the county. And there's one member appointed by the Community College to represent the college.
So it's outside of this, I would believe.
So only three... Only three are...
City-appointed.
City-appointed.
So this really doesn't fall under our thing, does it?
I don't think so. No.
Well, it is one of our standing committees.
Yes, I think so, the way it's worded.
I mean, the way this is worded is that every...
All committee members, except Parks and Rec and Library Board.
So you... The way I would read it... The way I would read it is the three people that you appoint to the TIF board fall within this standing committee appointment. Now, if you want to list it as one of the ones that aren't required to be in the city, then we need to list it specifically.
But we don't appoint those people that are not within the city, so...
Right. But if you wanted to appoint somebody to one of your three, Library and Parks and Recreation...
But wasn't it structured...
The other two, you don't have any control over.
Yeah. Wasn't it structured as three city member, board members?
It's three people that represent the city of Chandler.
I think we need to keep our TIF board members city residents. So I think we got that covered without specifically mentioning them.
Anybody else on this page? Nothing?
We better get a consensus here on how this goes.
The... What about this 10.1? Do we want to change anything?
Do you change?
I do not wish to change anything.
Angie, you don't wish to change anything?
No.
That's the majority right there.
Sure.
Then let's move on to page number 12. Lauren, do you have anything on page 12?
It's blank.
Does anybody else have anything for page 12?
I underlined at the top, "Those recognized to address the council during an agenda item discussion should be limited to: city staff, the person requesting the agenda item, and other city-related representatives, such as a city engineer, auditor, or board or commission chair."
Which one is in?
That's the very top paragraph. Because repeatedly in our meetings, people from the general public with no proven expertise are called upon. I think it should stay as is, but this is something that is not being enforced in our meetings.
Well, personally, I think that we probably should amend it because there'll be somebody that has expertise in a field such as Mr. Stanton. And we know that he has expertise, and we can ask him a question directly relating to a well or a contract on a well.
I think that's what she just said.
Well, but it says... It says it should be limited to...
City staff.
Yes. Because we have a water person and an administrator with certifications in water, I believe, that are advising on this, not to just call on the general public. But I'm not actually referring to you calling on Mr. Stanton. I'm referring to you calling on lots of other people.
If it's somebody who has expertise...
With no authority or expertise in any agenda item. So I just want to point this out to the council that it's actually stated in here that the random public should not be commenting on agenda items. That's an example of being out of order.
So you feel that if somebody has specific knowledge and they're a member of our community, that they should not be allowed to be... A question should not be allowed to be asked of them?
They can speak and state their opinion in the public forum. That's what it's for. We have experts advising us on these issues.
I disagree with that. That's all.
Essentially, what you're suggesting is that one citizen of our community should usurp all of the other advisors that we have speaking on particular agenda items. That's what you're suggesting.
No, ma'am.
If they've signed up to speak, then when it comes to that agenda item, and they've deferred by what... And deferred to that, then they could speak at that time.
But I'm just saying, if somebody has particular knowledge... Say we're doing a bridge abutment, and we don't have an engineer here, but there happens to be somebody in the crowd that has expertise in that area, and we ask Mr. Jones, you know, "We're gonna do this bridge abutment. Can you tell us a little bit about how it's done?" You wouldn't want him to be able to speak?
That's not orderly, and expertise is subjective. And it should not be solely up to you to decide who is an expert and should be allowed to speak during a meeting.
I agree with it. It shouldn't be up to me. What about you? If you knew somebody that knew something about it, and you...
I don't have the authority to call on anyone in the audience. You do. And you are the one who has repeatedly called on audience members out of order with no expertise to speak on osmosis in Arizona water systems. That's just one example.
And you're sure they don't... They didn't have any expertise in that area?
It's irrelevant. A lot of time in meetings has been wasted because of this right here. So, council, I'm wanting to hear from you. Should this stay? Should we enforce it? Or do we need to make changes here?
Okay. It says... I have a question about... Are we talking about... When we talk about auditors and people... If they're here from...
Yeah, so they're here to present the agenda item. They get their time to talk, and then we can question them. This is when the presiding officer says, "Hey, Mr. Valier, what do you think on this?" That's what this is about. Mr. Valier, I'm not picking on you. I just happen to know your name.
He's a good guy to pick on. I do think that it's important that we have had an opportunity to vet the people that do present. I'm not saying, Mr. Mayor, that there couldn't be someone in the audience that might not be qualified to speak on a topic. But I agree with Ms. Dixon that that is somewhat subjective. And rather than it be based off of one person's opinion, I do think it's important to vet out beforehand. So if you knew of someone that you felt had an expertise in a certain area, then I think it'd be important to ask them to come and sign up on the forum and present their...
What about if you ask them to come and do a presentation?
That would need to be an agenda item.
It would have to be an agenda item.
I got you. Okay. Duly noted.
I think that if we follow this rule, it'll keep the meetings orderly, and we won't have interruptions during the meeting. We won't be discussing something and then all of a sudden call on someone in the audience to get up there and speak for five minutes or so.
So are we down to page 12?
No, no. I need to ask them a question. So let's say it's their time to speak during that topic. And we're discussing, would we have the right to call them back up to ask them a specific question? Or that would end that as well? Or this has nothing to do with that at all?
Because if there's people that have signed up to speak, they're under that three minutes bit too.
Right.
So if they've spoken... I'm getting tired. If they've spoken earlier, then they are using probably most of their time. So we better... I wouldn't think we'd call them back up again.
Yeah, but if it was like, somebody wanted to ask them a specific question about what they said?
I mean, I don't necessarily have an issue with someone asking a question of like... like, you know, we had a gentleman last time who was speaking on a fence matter, we had zero information prior to the meeting about why that was on the agenda. There are questions, and who else can you ask besides that citizen? But we're not asking him to speak from an expert position.
Right, right.
So to bring somebody up there to present on a different kind of water system is completely irrelevant and out of place, and that's, that's what I'm talking about.
Right, I, I, okay, I just want to be sure.
Well, and you're also, on citizen comments, you're limiting on what you can, how you can interact. If it's an agenda item, it's a little bit different. If it's not an agenda item, all you can say back is, statements of fact.
Right.
And basically, we'll take something under advisement and possibly put it on a future agenda, so. And that, that's, that's covered in 11.6.
Oh, oh, okay, yeah. No, well, I was just thinking about some situations where we were discussing something, and then we had to ask, they had to come back up there to ask, to answer a question, so I didn't know, you know, how we deal with, okay, I got it, I just want to be sure.
Are we still on twelve?
Is there anything else on twelve?
Nope, I'll turn to...
Let's move on to thirteen.
Okay.
Got two more pages, folks.
I have a couple more chapters forgot to go.
I bet you do. I noticed you ate, you ate before you came in here.
I have a couple more pages anyway that are not, that are...
It is my bedtime now.
Fourteen and fifteen, so.
Anybody have any questions on page thirteen?
My, my only thing that I have on page thirteen, it starts on page thirteen, but it continues the same type of situation on page fourteen as well. And I just would like to make each statement, and I can specify which ones, to make each statement where it's consistent from council and mayor as well. It's a similar situation to what happened a little while back in another area that we adjusted. Let me point out, let me just show you what I'm talking about. So like in 12.2, a lot of the statements, pretty much every single statement on there with the exception of letter C, that, that addresses one or the other, addresses both. So like 12, 12.2D says the city administrator should maintain a checklist and timetables for requests and other directives of the council and mayor, so it includes both. 12E, or 12.2E does the same thing, all council members and the mayor. But on 12.2C, it says the city administrator may delegate responsibility for the response as necessary and appropriate, but the city administrator will be responsible for its receipt by the council in a timely manner. Can we add the council, receipt by the council and mayor, like just to make it work uniform? And the same thing happens down in 12.6, where it says city administrator slash council relations, can it say, and have, also have mayor relations or something, just so that it's, just so that we're keeping everything uniform? That whole, that same, that same little idea comes into 12.6A all the way down to 12.6E, every single letter on there. I think it would be very good for the purpose of being uniform if each of those letters would say, like, for example, 12.6A, work to establish mutual trust with the council and mayor. Maintain open, on B, maintain open lines of communication with the council, and keep council and mayor informed, just to make it uniform on all those letters, so 12.6A all the way down through E. I know that jumped pages, so I apologize if we want to just deal with page thirteen. It was just something that, for me, it, it starts on one page with the same idea, and it just, it's part of the same numbers that start on page thirteen.
And, and especially on 12.6E, I, I just think, that's a real good one, we definitely do that.
I have no problem with that and mayor to that.
Because I think then we can have a better, especially with this possibly getting two or three new council members. We need, that, we need an orientation or need to see what's going on so you can make better decisions.
That was thirteen, but I just, since it was the same number that carried over, yeah, I do have something on fourteen, but I was going to make sure everybody else was good for thirteen before. I jumped pages.
So anything else on fourteen? Page fourteen?
Was everyone done with thirteen first, just, just to make sure, because I don't want to jump before?
No, I was good with that.
Everybody was good on thirteen?
Okay.
Somebody want to go before me on fourteen? Does anybody have anything on fourteen? I mean, actually, I'm sitting here looking at this, you're correct, Milton, I was sitting, because what I was going to talk about was 13.1, but we talked about the abuse of, of authority, and we were adding in, we were adding in a clause to include, if there was a council member as well. That was really my only thing, was I want to make sure everything we're doing is uniform. So if we're going to set times for potentially a chair on a very rare circumstance, person that's exceptional could be removed, then I think there also needs to be that call, or that point for a council as well.
What about C? Where the chair ignores a point of order that is not derogatory, the member can repeat the point of order a second and third time, and if the chair still ignores it, the member standing in his place may put the point of order to a vote without debate. Those are for situations of chaos, where a council member has called a point of order and it has been ignored three times. This has happened where we've been ignored twice, so we've almost been to this third time where a vote could have been called.
I thought there has to be some way that we could, I know where you're going with this, I just thought there has to be some way that we could allow everyone to have one chance to speak before.
I think this point of, this is calling a point of order at...
But you're voting on the point of order, you're not voting, y'all, no.
Yes, you're not voting on an issue.
Oh, okay, it's not calling, it's, okay.
Whatever's happening has to cease, in other words.
I understand, okay. I was getting those two confused, the point of order and the call to question, or those two, they, they're...
Yes, they're all confusing.
I understand. So I was looking at that one incorrectly.
Are we through with that page? Because I have, okay, I have an Article 14 suggestion called remedies for not following the city council rules of conduct and procedure. This comes from the webinar that Stacy, the mayor, and I were at last week, and we heard there that there needs to be a reprimand code in our ordinances. So I'm suggesting Article 14, remedies for not following the city council rules of conduct and procedures, 14.1, and I, y'all got that, I passed it down to you, Autumn. If any person, mayor, administrator, or councilman breaks code regulations, the person who first notices it should bring it to attention, to it by calling for a point of order and explaining why the code was broken. 14.2, if the offender does not heed the warning, he shall be asked why he is not complying to the code. And 14.3, if the person does not agree to work within code, the council with a majority vote may issue a vote of censure for the refusal to comply.
That was from our ethics class last week.
Huh?
That was the webinar, the webinar for the ethics.
Yeah. They didn't give us all the details, I had to go back and add the details, they just made the suggestion.
But that's what was recommended in the Code of Ethics Seminar?
They, they recommend that we have a reprimand code.
They said don't have a code without having some sort of punishment accountability for violating that code, otherwise it can't be enforced.
And make sure that you, we're to buy your city attorney first. Make sure that it's legal and it complies with state statute.
We'll have...
Isn't Blake going to have to be the one that ultimately, like, finalizes this document? Which means you'll have to see this as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there no discussion on that? I've got another new one for us. Item 15.
What, are, are we good with adding that?
Yeah, they said, they said check it with Blake, yeah.
But if Blake approves, we're adding it?
I would like it to go through our city attorney.
It applies to state statute, you know.
Because it's straight, it's talking about everyone, it's...
It's, it's all, it's all... Okay, item number 15, titled council and mayor reports on the agenda. 15.1, if a council or mayor puts an agenda item for a report on the council meeting, he must have specific information placed in the council packet. 15.2, the mirror, material must not be derogatory toward any council member or employee. 15.3, the material shall not be political, political in nature. And point four, items must be factual or deal with current events or give notice of future events.
Everything we do is political in nature?
No.
Pretty much.
No.
Stating the facts is not political.
Stating facts is not political. If I, if, if, if I stated, well, I'm going to pick on you again.
You shouldn't have counted.
You got a target on your back.
If I, if I made a statement and said that Bob Valier should have run for city council, then I would be making a, I would be putting something in here that's political. So that's, and if I, if I bragged on somebody that is running for council, that would be political.
Well, if you, if you put, if you make a statement saying, I don't feel that we should be buying the kid home, that's political.
That's not political.
Yeah, it is.
That's your opinion? Only unless you turn it into political, it's not political.
Well, if, if you were making that statement here in a debate about whether to buy it or not, that is not political.
No, that's true.
If you're going to, if you're going to pontificate about past councils and say you shouldn't have bought the kid home, that turns political.
Absolutely.
So it depends on what context you're using there.
Absolutely, I agree.
So if you tell us that, that we've been frivolous with the city's money, that we've spent money that was just...
That's political.
That's right.
It is political.
At that point, that becomes political.
So, you know, a lot of stuff that we deal with is political. It, you know, so I don't think that, that applies right, I think that should be strict, just that wording, it should not be political in nature, because a lot of stuff we say and do is political in nature, it is in fact. So...
It would prevent us from saying some things that are political.
Well, I think that if we were all a little nicer to each other, a lot of things wouldn't get said. And, and once again, I think that there's nobody without blame, we all, we all have blame in this, that we, we all could have done better, each and every one of us, so that's it.
So does this mean you're going to go on Facebook and apologize for the things that Ms. Lunsford just read from What's Up Chandler, since this meeting has been nothing what you suggested it was going to be?
Well, some of it's true, some of it, I'll do a recap for you, I'll do a recap.
It was not true at all, you completely misstated.
I have to do a recap for you, I'll try to do it tomorrow.
Let's not get off the agenda.
Can y'all let me know what that last section is going to be?
I, I'm, I'm good with keeping, the material shall not be political in nature. I think whatever material we present, whether it's a mayor or a council member's court, should be facts, and not just our own opinions.
You, I agree with that, it should be factual, and things I have presented have been factual.
And 15.2, I think is good too. You know, if we're, we should all want to be ethical about the way we're conducting ourselves, and so I think it's very important that statements are not made that are derogatory towards any city staff, towards any council members. I just, I'm okay with all of this.
So, that being said, I felt like in the class last week, they brought up some unethical behaviors that we have witnessed, and we have nothing in writing which addresses those behaviors. There were specific scenarios that were asked by other cities, not our city, but very similar situations to what we have experienced the last 10 months. And the attorney straight up said, well, while these behaviors may not be illegal, they're highly unethical, they create division, and they make it very difficult for councils to accomplish much at all. So my question is, being that you just talked about email and slandering city employees and whatnot in a public, you know, way, via email, via Facebook, social media, whatever, I mean, do we want something in here for Blake to review about unethical behaviors such as those?
Just my, my honest opinion, I wish, I know that there, there is such a thing, it's called a code of ethics, that to me is a great document, I actually, that if, if everyone would, you know, I don't, I don't know, it's not, I guess I could have gone and been nosy and asked and said, hey, can I see everybody's code of ethics? But I just think that if everybody is wanting to be ethical, that code of ethics is a wonderful place to start, and it lays it straight out, I just, at this point, I don't know if everyone's has done that.
I just took a total ethics class.
But if so, that would take care of it, if we had to enforce it, I mean, I guess it would have to be in this document though. So I don't, I don't know.
Do y'all, do y'all want to come back and look at a code of ethics, not a part of this, that we're doing to neither separate? You brought it up, I'm asking you.
If you're talking about putting something new on agenda, how about you just, we, you can call me after tonight, and we'll talk and decide if we wanted to put something on there about that.
Well, she, I think she's talking about on me.
Oh, you're talking on this, on this document?
Like a 15.5, everyone should, everyone should...
That's what I'm saying, asking her, does she want to add it to, as a part of this, or do y'all want to, you've just gotten that class, got to develop another instrument that isn't code of ethics.
I mean, I just felt like, under no circumstances should any of us ever slander city employees or one another. We might not agree with each other, but that is unacceptable.
So you're talking about adding it into this document?
How would you word it for like 15.5? Everybody adhere to the code of ethics?
It would have to be a different, it would have to be a 16, is what it would have to be, unless there's another place it ties in, because it doesn't tie into 15.
What I would suggest you do, if you want a code of ethics, is to write a code of ethics, but probably there should be a social media policy also.
Absolutely.
And that you put bullet points in this that refers to the adherence to a code of ethics and a social media policy.
Well, I think you run to, I think you run some problems there with your, you know, First Amendment rights, freedom of speech.
Well, and so...
And that's been addressed.
Many, many, many cities have code of ethics and social media policies, and you don't have to...
I have one percentantial right here.
You don't have to violate somebody's First Amendment rights, and certainly, there's, there's no way to, there's nothing that you could do other than if you want to publicly censure.
Can't do that, oh, I can't do it.
I mean, I kind of, I guess what I, what I think about it is that, I think that the document that we're offered as council members and as, you know, public, like, the mayor would be offered that as well, I think that it's a great document, and I feel that, that no one should have an issue abiding by it, but there has to be a legal reason why it's not required that you sign it. but there has to be a legal reason why it's not required that you sign it. I don't know. I feel like it should just be a given that that's how we should function and operate, but I understand the concerns with current issues that are going on.
Is it possible for us to consider some of these things at the next meeting? Like the... like a social media policy part of it?
I think... I think it would be hard for us to put something together and pass it that quickly. But, you know... If y'all want to look and see what one might look like, just Google Texas.
I have a copy right here of San Angelo's, kind of their social media policy for their town.
I mean, you can just Google "social media policies" and "Texas municipalities", and it... Vault Springs, Bernie, Leander, Dallas, Texas City, Lago Vista, Abilene, Northwood, Richland Hills. I mean, most... I would probably go out on a limb and say more cities have Code of Ethics and social media policies than do not. But it is how you follow them.
Well, but that's also what was said in that meeting, don't have... Don't allow for ethics violations and not have reprimands thrown out.
But also, all of you need to remember that it is your responsibility, if you are posting as a city councilperson or a mayor, you have to retain everything you post. If you're posting as Stacy Dixon's citizen, you don't. If you're posting as Stacy Dixon's council member, you have to archive that information. And just because it's listed on Facebook, the law has said, "It's not a suitable archive." So if you post something, you need to be printing that out and archiving that. Because we're not.
That's good information.
I'm just glad I did what Blake said.